Can you do that? Yeah. And then I'll start them here.
Can you hear me? Is this thing working? So, good evening. Welcome to the City of Dalmatia council meeting. I think everyone's here. Hopefully your technology doesn't let us through. This may be switched off if we carry on like this. Shall we start? Everyone okay to start? So any apologies for actions? All right, turn it off, sorry.
councillor Brigger and unitary councillor Renner.
Any declarations of interest?
Right, Jane.
Any more? Chairman's announcement, can I take as read A through to K? Can I take as read A through to K?
Yeah.
Do you think anyone wants to discuss on A through to K? This can't still be cranked, it's a terrible. On ITML, the World British League and the Members Service, I'd just like to point out that the meeting's actually in the morning, 11 o'clock, not 3 o'clock. So if we could spread our news to the kind of surprise to some people. Everyone could tell many people as they could. Yeah, please.
How much do we have?
10:11, not 11 o'clock.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, we're gathering, so there is a notice going around to gather at St Peter's Avenue at 10:30. Yeah, and then up to...
And the gap to 10:50.
Yeah, and more, we all sort of 10:50. Okay. All right, Chris. All right, so point M and a statement for Alsey Town Council, which I'm going to read out. Over recent months, Alsey Town Council has funded the defence of an individual facing litigation pertaining to a statement made by the individual whilst they were a servant in council and on council business in April 2014. Alsey Town Council has acted in accordance with resolutions passed by Alsey Town Council, including resolutions passing by the previous council prior to May 2015. Alsey Town Council and legal advisers have been diligent throughout the period to minimise expenditure. The matter is now resolved. The claim has been discontinued. Alsey Town Council has incurred expenditure of £13,435. This expenditure does not relate to comments by individuals on social media in or about November and December 2014. Alsey Town Council will continue to reasonably but robustly defend the claims against the council and its councillors. I believe this has been put out at the back as well, a copy of this. Okay. And on to point M through to P, Q, R. Any comments? Thank you, Mr Brigger. Proceeding for the Dalmatian Youth Council.
Right, it's a general report. I missed you all. I have been away for medical reasons, but I'm back and I'm raring to go. So I'm just going to run through a couple of things that's been happening. So youth allotment, done really, really well, grown lots of amazing things. Potato ages, beetroot, black currant juice, stuff. And we've got a lot of children, young people involved in that process. And some have said, in such success that we've been looking at getting another plot for the coming year, which I have got the details of and I shall confirm what that would be. So we never thought last year that we'd expand it so quickly, but that's it's done really well. We have so much interest, so it's great to see families involved in that with us. Project McKenzie, I've heard this other county before, it's our employment skills and training programme. This next cohort launches in November. I'm recruiting at the moment for anyone between the ages of 17 and 24 that's interested in working in the care sector. So if you know anybody, friends, daughters, sons, anyone that might be interested in that, please do contact me. I will leave some information at the back of the room. It gives a little bit of a rundown of how this next cohort will look. It's over four weeks. We had Star of Aragon Awards in September, end of September. We do it, it's an annual awards thing that we do to celebrate volunteers in the community. It's not just about Aragon tenants, it's a wider community as well. The reason I'm bringing it up is because we actually awarded a young woman from Alsey that some of you know, Soraya Rahman, who received an award for youth achievement award. They've got all her work over the summer and previously. I'm going to leave that with you. And we sent her up for it, I just thought, you know, recognition. Sort of, she didn't do it, absolutely. And we'll be in January, we've been putting out the awards notices for next year. And we had some young people and some teams from Alsey competing in the Rotary Wheelchair Challenge that we've done the last couple of years at Bedford's Athletic Stadium last week. It's a fundraiser for his kids, for Bedford, willpower and heart sports and wellbeing, raising money for children with disability and offering lots of opportunity for mobility. So it really, really could turn out. Don't know the figures that were raised at the moment, but there was quite a lot of people involved. So again, you know, thank you to people in the community for taking part in that. October half term, we've got some little sessions going on and one of the sessions is down at the youth club, so we're going to team up with the Teenage Youth Club and do something now on the Friday. Other than that...
Comprehensive report?
Yes.
Any questions from anyone? Okay, thank you, Emma. Just before we move on to members' questions, if I may introduce Susan. Susan Fox is coming along to observe today. And Susan will be our new clerk from 2nd of November, so. Any members' questions? Cool, okay. Any public participation? Any public participation?
Yes, councillor Holloway, yes.
Would you like to go first, sir? Maybe you can introduce yourself.
I'll introduce myself, because there are some people who don't know me. Nick Daniels, always the chairman of Alsey Town Council from 11, 2011, 2015. I'd like to speak for just a few minutes on the agenda item relating to the legal costs of the councillor. This has been obviously kept for various reasons, quiet up to now. But the total cost of Alsey Town Council has already been spoken about in the statement that was issued by councillor Holloway. It's £13,435. Now based upon a precept of around £175,000 to £180,000, that is 7.5% of the precept for the year spent on defending a councillor. I, and I'm along with various other people, am appalled that Alsey Town Council has squandered this much money defending the actions of councillor Grabitt without any justification in his legal dispute with Tony Hare, who is the husband of the ex-clark Elsie Hare. I say no justification because firstly, when he made a defamatory remark or claim against Tony Hare in council, he was acting without council approval, without there being any truth in it, in an attempt to further discredit the then-clark Elsie Hare. Indeed, he was challenged on this claim strenuously at the time and it has since proven to be a lie as the final settlement hearing proved. Secondly, if he was genuinely acting in the interests of Alsey Town Council as a councillor, why have Alsey Town Council not defended this action through their insurers? Thirdly, Alsey Town Council cannot hide behind the claim that the previous council resolved to approve this legal defence. We agreed at the April council meeting that Alsey Town Council would cover reasonable initial legal costs incurred by the former councillor Chris Grabitt as resolved in minute 1165.3. I do not believe that any sane person would consider £35,500 or indeed the first payment of £7,500 as being covered by that resolution. No details of the case were given to the councillor at that vote, hence it was resolved with reservations pending further details being released. Now, the full final cost of councillor Grabitt's stupidity is known to the village. I would like him to answer these questions. Firstly, will he resign, having acted totally against the best interests of residents in a reckless and ill-judged way? Secondly, if he will not, how on earth can he expect residents to have any trust and confidence in him going forward? Thirdly, again, if he will not, what will he personally do to compensate residents for such profligacy? For example, will he replace two bus stops? And fourthly, why is councillor Grabitt contributing less than Alsey Town Council towards these costs? His costs amount to £11,083. I'm afraid that this new council acts as one and for what I've seen has done very little to safeguard the public purse. It was voted in, in almost a wave of hysteria, to remove longstanding councillors. However, if it carries on making errors on this scale, it will go the way of New Labour and become a thing of the past sooner rather than later. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the comments are noted. More comments? Okay, your comments will be noted. Any other public participation?
Yes, Hugh Harper, who was the previous chairman of this council and now chairman of the residents' association. When this £7,500 was first made public, that it had been paid for defence fees for a councillor, I did ask the question and told it in confidence and we couldn't be told. The residents' association then sent a letter to the council to ask for a bit of the invoice, which was changed when this was called. Again, the refusal. And it seems funny that the refusal was, it was harm another person and be against public interest. It's difficult to allow someone to be against public interest and miss their money, which had been spent. I enjoyed what Nick Daniels has said and I do believe that councillor Grabitt should resign from the council and the council should, well, actually, they should be paying themselves after this money. They're going to have the residents and understand, unbelievable, that you sat there and just passed this through with that word of... You leave me speechless, I tell you.
Anyone prepared to comment? I'm to comment, you want to comment? Okay, your comments will be noted by the council. Anyone else?
Public participation, Mr Chair, thank you very much indeed. First and foremost, I believe it said in last month's Clerk and Council, which I believe this council got a copy, it quite clearly stated that any member of the public can walk into the council office and see the books without notification. So can you tell me why, if somebody has asked for see parts of these books have not been allowed? And the second point I'd like to raise, we were told that the ground down at the cemetery is not suitable for planting. When I was raised about planting stuff down there, we were told it was too boggy, too muddy. Can you tell me why, there is, put a picture here showing planting of trees down there, please?
Well, that's an agenda item for later, so I guess we'll cover that. Anyone else like to comment on that, please? Okay, your comments have been noted. Anyone else did any public participation? Are you done? Okay, thank you. Minutes for the previous meetings? Seven, aye. Any comments?
Full type vote on 251 MP losing key to the boardroom. Sorry.
Yes. President?
Superfier 9D. My recollection is that when we were considering the applications from scouts who were in the final of the event, that they wanted to make the display of the event better rather than larger. I don't know whether this material or not, but...
It was discussed at the 6th of October meeting. On the, I think, September, it was just being issue one and the council was wanting the scouts to come in.
Yeah, so it is in later on, but I think the reference was that they wanted more money to make it better. And we said, well, what do you mean by better? Rather than larger, the larger means bigger. Better is other thing.
What would you like to change to?
Better. Because in the later minute, it says better.
Okay. Any other comments on minutes? Anyone like to pose in the second, please? Proposal for acceptance? Councillor Watt? Anyone like to second it, please? Okay, and B, the town council meeting on 6th of October, minutes? Any comments? Does someone like to propose acceptance, please? Councillor Watt, seconding? Thank you. Oh, it's just a no, okay. Any matters arising?
I was just making the point, I was here for parliament, it was late.
Four, six, oh, okay. 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 Bedfordshire Police Report. Welcome. Thank you for your time.
Got the latest crime catchers. Quite cool. There's an odd and a half that day, bounced back to you that, 1st of September. We've got four tall fences, I'll show them quickly. There's been nine violent offences. There, nothing really in the community's interest, I'd say. Too much each domestic or, you know, crime men having fights. It's been pretty, it's not random attacks of violence. Been one by a group, between the 1st of September and 2nd of February, complete happening in circles after unknown offenders gained access to insecure conserving doors attached to the property. Pretty preventable, isn't it? Through an unlocked door, there's cat lane, but it's a mental crime. Vehicle crime between the 30th and 40th. Unknown offenders attempted to remove the wheel from a vehicle in house lane but were unsuccessful. So that's crime as a interfering with a motor vehicle offence. Well, obviously, they didn't actually get a wheel. On the 2nd of October, three industrial courts were stolen from a van in Nantucket Terrace. And there was accidental damage on the 26th of September. There was an incident in the field of the Hitching Road where a bay of hay was set on fire. And between the 17th and 20th of September, a vehicle in trafficway was scratched and out into the...
Can I see the numbers down? Any questions?
A genuine question, I might just come up with one, because there's a petition started by Bedfordshire Police, which is shooting on social media at the moment and it seems that's quite interesting. Do you know any more, can you give us any details on that? Do you know about it?
Yeah, I don't feel well, but the Home Office came in to review of the allocation that Bedfordshire received on the National Parliament, which is a minute, 0.9% which Ollie Martins, the chief constable, and Mike Clifford argue is not enough given Bedford's funding is a rural forced area when really there's Newton, which generates the same amount of crime as the London Borough as well as the Taylor Street and things like that, which are Australian resources. So the Home Office did come in to review the funding formula, but they said, no, we can't have any more money, it's staying at 0.9%. Half the true income, actually, we've given a little boost to their percentages, but for whatever reason Bedfordshire have been left at 0.9%. So obviously after that's failed and there was the failed referendum in May as well, this is the latest idea to get, just to get the discussion into the hands of parliament about the funding. I'm not sure, I think it should be referred back to the Home Office, who obviously don't want to say no, but it's there, it could help.
That's the constructor of the 2019 decision, is it?
It's Ollie Martins, I believe, the PCC.
That's cool, the constructor. So if anyone's not seen it, it needs 100,000 signatures to go to parliament. Needs 10,000 to go to Home Office review. When I signed it this evening, it was 3,695, so it needs some promotion in Bedfordshire to try and get an allocation extra, please.
I think Chris first.
I was suggesting when your sergeant was here a couple of months ago that you would do a day trip or a day visit to Alsey to walk around and visit schools and businesses and shops. Has that happened or is it going to happen?
No, I haven't had a chance to discuss it yet, but obviously, if there's, if there's something we could like say, then I can get that put together fairly easily.
I think so as well, we see you doing more at the time.
Yeah, the intention to do it was, was in my opinion, very well. It's very difficult to know for sure that who wants it, but I think if you were to say you'd like to do it or who would have to do it.
Call just before the school run starts.
Yeah, it's Thursday, I'm trying to get that on. Kind of changed our shifts, so we start at eight now, probably seven the trees do, so I'm sitting quite tired. We can't get it sorted for the one, yeah, just on the radar.
Any more questions? Okay, thank you very much for your report. ITML, CDT for Alsey.
Sorry, I can't hear myself. Sorry, gents. I'm going to get away.
And reports from our colleagues in Central Bedford. I'll kick off. Weeks have gone now, but I did have a meeting Saturday before last with Andrew Saloo, one of the Bedfordshire MPs, and Madalys de Burke. We did discuss the concerns that we have as local residents and other councillors and from the Fiddler's Gasts and Police funding. Andrew Saloo works within the Home Office, he's the prison minister. And they are well aware of our concerns. The Police and Crime Commissioner has a committee that reviews his work. It's made up of Labour councillors, big Dems, there's independents on our Conservative council, we're all supporting this initiative to actually try and get the Home Office to review the amount of money that's going into policing in Central Bedford. It does need to have an uplift and an upweight in the funding that it gets. Moving on to some other items. I know members that, some members of this council attended the Town and Parish Conference on 23rd of September specifically around planning. I know we're seeing good feedback on that, the next one's on 11th of November. Going to be on passenger transport strategy and parking, et cetera. Hopefully it will be as successful as the previous one. We'd certainly like to see as many representatives from the council there as possible. You may be interested to know that if you go onto Central Bedford's website, the latest ward profiles, so there's a ward profile specifically for Alsey, goes into all the different demographics of Alsey. They are very, very good documents and certainly if you're doing a little bit of planning, you'd want to be looking at this. That is now up and on the system. It uses the latest information from government census, et cetera, and it builds into that all the information and data that we have on unemployment, travel to work, levels of crime, GCSE results, et cetera. Everything down to child obesity, et cetera, within each of the different wards. It is a very useful document. I would strongly suggest that you actually have a look at it and turn it off. It is quite competitive. This school organisation plan, which looks at school numbers, is now being published for 2015 to 2020. It is affected by the fact that we don't have a signed off approved development plan for Central Bedfordshire. We are getting a huge number of applications coming in which weren't within the development plan in this area alone. In Henlow, Clifton, Stondon, et cetera, there's hundreds of housing applications coming in, which is affecting our school numbers. So it's very difficult to plan for that, so watch this space on that one. In terms of highways numbers, just a heads up on what we managed to achieve in August. Across Central Bedford, we repaired 165 potholes, resurfaced 1.5 kilometres of highways, 2.8 kilometres of footpath, repaired 226 street lights and upgraded 228 to ADs. So we continue to invest in our infrastructure on that. Just a heads up, there's a new support for victims of domestic and sexual abuse. A new website, again, I'll forward copies of the details of that to the clerk if you want to get involved or some information on that one. Healthwatch, Central Bedford's council now has a an active relationship now with hospitals and one of our KPIs is to deliver improvements to public health. And in partnership with Aragon and their residents group, ROR, and together with the Old People's Reference Group. We're going to be hosting this year's Just Ask and the raid bus will be in Fiddleswade Town Centre on the 3rd of October to try and support that. I mentioned at the last meeting, it was quite some time ago, it feels, Central Bedford's canvassing and redoing in terms of electoral roll. There's still 37,000 households across Central Bedfordshire which have not responded to the paper that we sent out regarding re-registering on electoral roll. So that's picking up anybody who's turned 18 or about to turn 18. So there is concerns about that. Anybody over 16 can register and obviously once they're 18, they get the vote. But our concern is obviously we want to see people on this register. So we'll be pushing that over the course of the next couple of months as well. And there's a number of consultations that's going to be coming up. There's a consultation which has just started on school admission arrangements. Central Bedford's council announced one for you for that again. How to do your transport strategy, which will be spoken by Anetik from me.
Just a couple of small things that are more local. The, there was a, the consultation for the parking round station, the informal consultation, which was just on over the last few weeks, is now finished. And a formal consultation will now be starting in November. So at that one, there will be a meeting, there wasn't the informal one. So the proposals are being drafted now from responses from the informal one, which will go forward. And the other thing I had, I know the council did write, copied ward councillors in our letter, wrote to James Jamison, who hasn't as far as he is away abroad on holiday at the moment. So apologises for that, but he will be picking it up when he gets back. Have you guys got any questions?
No.
And can you provide any feedback on the informal consultation?
We know, it hasn't been released yet. It's still on the document. As soon as we do, it'll be out there anyway and coming out to you as a town councillor.
In this early update, we've continued tipping down, I think it's at this farm.
At this farm. But you guys are flying around about it today. Officers have passed, they've gone down there again and have a look at what's going on. It is, if it's environmental waste issues, and it looks like they're moving all that rubble around, so we're trying to look at what exactly they're doing. We think it's actually within Central Bedford, because it is right on the border. Okay? But it's, that's an environmental agency issue, not a CBC issue. We're trying to find out exactly what's going on, whether they have a waste licence etcetera, or whether they need a waste licence. So at the moment, that's all the information I have.
It's sadly causing a lot of residents, like there's a new tick.
No, it won't be a new tick.
It looks like it is. If you don't look at it, it's massive. It's the, it's the traffic problem.
Yeah, appreciate that. I'm going to call you my answer.
And with regard to that, I was informed by recently that there were lawyers going through the village at three o'clock in the morning. And I just think that's a bit.
Over the clock, isn't it? Yeah.
How do we expedite our investigation?
I've asked enforcement officers to get involved and received emails from them today. They've been down to the site and came up with some very unique responses. It's generally described in basic, I'm chasing them for better input into what's going on.
I mean presumably there's a register for people that have licences, they're either on it or not.
That would sit with the environment agency. Our officers are trying to find out what is going on there.
Derek, would it be possible for you to send an update to the council?
I will, yes. I'm going to be talking to the officers tomorrow on it and following up and I'll feedback to the clerk and push things through basically to it. Okay?
I do appreciate it.
A few more points?
And the dog way it's been, if we've been working on.
I sent an email, you didn't respond to it. It is going in.
Yeah, it's where it is.
Yeah, they're going to come back to me with a date and I'll chase them to find the date when they're going to put it in, but they have guaranteed they're just going in. So I just sent the email, don't have a date, they should have got that.
You know, the resident who brought it to our attention and the other names have been asking since May, it's October.
They said it's in the, yeah.
Christmas is coming.
Yeah. Going to keep that dog word.
Okay. Any other questions for the ward councillors?
And a topical one around the school and the traffic. This is sort of a few of the bits you get, comes and goes, you know. As these buildings and a lot of this land is Central Bedford, there's been a suggestion that a site wide view is coordinated and facilitated, takes place. Is that something that you, the council could help us with?
Right, I've already had discussions with Derek, the head teacher, with regards to an update on the school's travel plan, because that's where most of what things will originate from. The school's travel plan, I spoke to him about 10 days ago about this, hasn't been reviewed for quite a few years. So I've offered support with that from the town of Bedford's officers to look at that travel plan. We also wrote to Sergeant Kidd requesting that officers are attendants here at school time in the morning and in the afternoon to see what the issues are and to get some feedback as to what we can do with that. But I think the first thing for me is for the school to come up with a new comprehensive travel plan and then from that, as to what information and what support they need to improve things down in this area. So Derek has taken that forward. At the same time, at the last parent's evening, he organised a questionnaire to parents with regards to their concerns and he was saying that to a particular person in the company shop or the neighbour who wanted to actually look at that, some of that data and information. So they were going to look at that, bring some feedback to myself, the outcomes of that, so we can kind of build that into a travel plan as well.
Would you be as a, thank you Derek.
Yeah, absolutely. But I hope, obviously as well, that your representative on the school board would be able to get some feedback on that as well.
Well, I think as the elected representatives, we would like to be here.
Absolutely.
Actively participating in that as a body.
Yeah. I think the school, the school plan, because the biggest issue is around school, school run time. The rest of the day, it's like a wall down there a lot of the time. So I think it's, we've got to try and work through the school travel plan to see what we can do to improve the situation. And hopefully Derek, as part of that process, will be working with other people who use this sign in this building as well, which would be the town council.
What's the next, like a few back in a month and?
No, it's very much the school travel plan is dealt with by the school. So I've offered the support for Central Bedford's officers to engage with specific officers who have helped with the school travel plan. Derek needs to come up with this through his governors, because it needs to be something that's dealt with through governors of the school. So actually we want you to come in and support us on this. So it's not something that is led by us, it is a school owned travel plan.
But the timeframe, you know, what are we looking at?
I don't know, you'd need to confirm that with Derek, Esther Harry wants to know it.
I thought I would do it.
Yeah.
As a, as a government building. Better be to now, so we can all be, that makes you tend to focus on more academic issues.
And took some action there, shouldn't we? I think we need to capture a point what that was. As a council.
Well, and school trouble. Cool.
Just one final question on the, the yellow lines, which we have a council request to get outside the WI. And we've come to that. We received a request, a response which said there's no money, but it would pay for them.
I can go a part of the match funding scheme, which is what we've done in Henlow. They said exactly the same, we wanted lines. And the only way we got them in the end was through the match funding scheme, which had paid half. And there will be another match, hopefully another match of funding scheme. It's a little tough, yes, next week I'm in search. So it's still to take six months. So that's, that's the alternative. How, how long did you want the line? Because the, the school hatchets go almost past the WI, they go right up to the court.
It does need. They're just parking outside the WI, they're doing about three cars. And that narrows the road too much in lines. When they're parked there, the traffic can't get through and it causes a big, big problem.
I totally agree Cathy, in terms of the pinch point that it creates. There's a number of options. One, the town council said we'll pay for it, kind of getting put in. Then goes to public consultation, because it's a traffic management order, no, a traffic regulation order. As long as nobody objects, officers will pretty much put it straight through. If somebody objects, then they will automatically go to traffic management committee. So what we need is to, a request coming in, work out how it's going to get paid for, and then hopefully nobody objects and we can push it through as quickly as possible.
If it's just, what, 60 feet, do you have any idea what that might cost?
It's not the, it's not the cost of the work, it's the cost of advertising the traffic regulation law. Okay? So that has to go in all the papers etcetera and that's the expensive bit. So you look at it around about £1,500 for that.
And the way that the count, yes, sorry, the way they do it is put them together, so they get a number of requests from different councils and different things they consider. Yeah, and that's why it took one and a six months to get the one sorted out in Henlow, even though we were paying for half of it. But it had to be put together, so.
The cost of the paint is minimal. It's, it's painting's a spare meter, okay? It's not the paint, it's the actual processing, the traffic regulation order. So you've got to jump through all those different hoops. So we tried to tie them all together and that actually minimizes the cost or spreads the cost a lot. Especially as it's a short period.
You could tie this in with the, like, the top of the county.
I think that's a very, very good idea to take, in the back of all this other, other actions that are going to go forward, is we have to sing to it and if there isn't a traffic regulation order, we could also let it include it. And we could do that one. So yeah, so we're certainly happy to take that forward, it's a very good idea.
Very good. Any more questions? All right, thank you for, for feedback and your comments. Excuse me. Item 11, CBC five year plan. We've got a, a letter from, excuse me, Georgiana Stanford. Any considerations, any comments?
Well, I would observe the third paragraph that the desire to put smart targets around the goals and objectives is a particularly good one. It's not going to remain nebulous and vague or something. It's actually going to result in something that's going to be measurable. So I wrote in that.
Okay, okay, okay. We'll move on then. Nine applications, 12A, single story extension, one line in a row. Any comments? No. Inoffensive, subject to notice. Second then, right, thank you. And 12B, front extension, single story, single story extension, Hitching Road half. Subject to notice again? Okay. Doing good? Now finance, 3018, income expenditure, September. Any questions, any comments?
Can I just ask a question on page, page four at the top? Nine number, four zero, four five, equipment is for tours. Six thousand pounds of pounds. What was that? Was that for the tour?
That's for the Bay Area new equipment that we got from 10698, so it's a good, it's a good price.
Any else, any more questions? Okay, would someone like to? Yeah, propose acceptance, seconded by anyone please? Now petty cash, is it okay there, any questions? Not, okay, would someone like to propose acceptance please? That's the one. Seconded, thank you. Getting the hang of it. Our council payment. Thank you Gareth for proposing your acceptance, someone like to second it please. Thank you. Okay. 14, school nursery, school and nursery governor reports.
Can I go first? The nursery, our conference met on Monday, March of October. We were presented with the results, there's been a parent consultation regarding the proposed move to Bestin Beemat. So Derek went through that in some detail. Went through the answers given to each question because I'm quite challenging and learning. Things for the nursery staff there as to how, how two parents proceed. There's a lot of questions. The governing body members were confirmed, all the remainder of it is called. If, if the nursery move is taken over by Best, if that goes ahead, which we will know in December and it's a member there to accept, it looks as though that's likely to happen, then it come January, the governing body as such does exist and the cabinet doesn't have governing bodies, they have management committees. And they don't have the obligation to have a local council representative or parent representative. It's a difficult caper officially, although we have all been invited to advise if we wish to stay as members of the management committee should go to Best. Personally, it seems to me that there's a danger that when they move to Bestin Beemat sort of status, there could be a danger that the school activity and governance moves a bit further away from the community because there's not this obligation to have certain representatives. And it does appear from our experience when Catherine Morgan was interviewed whatever for being governor at Etonbury that the criteria has been set differently. So I'm hoping definitely at the nursery level that parents and indeed our volunteer to stay member would have to feedback progress to council. So that's sort of an insight into the changes that are potentially going to take place. We also had a report on new staffing structure for the new term. There's been quite a lot of changes. I think in the nursery internally, the changes have been quite dramatic as they prepare for the future. But I think it's been mentioned in such a way that it's been firstly transparent to parents and the children themselves. In fact, the environment there is much better for children now than it was prior to the summer holidays for some of the investments that have been made into the nursery. We've decided not to have a meeting in November, but to have a meeting, dates have to be arranged in December, at which point we will know the future in nursery, whether it's going to become Bestin Beemat or not.
No, just, just so one, the parent representation is through, will be through Beemat, through Gothic Me. Because Gothic Me has a local governing body which has to have two parents on it. That's the requirement as far as the DFE are concerned. There's no parent, parents necessarily involved with Beemat at board level. But every school and obviously the nursery will become, the past it will become part of Gothic Me. So there will be parent representation there. And as you say, there is an intention of having a management committee which will have parents on it, because I think it's critical, I agree with you entirely, you've got to have local representation. So that will continue, but it will be in a slightly different structure. So to reassure you that that's not, the intention is not to try and remove the, the control and the way in which it's run. It will still be very much locally there.
Derek's already made that point. I think the way it's presented and the terminology which it is, I think there's a danger it will alienate TSAA people as opposed to professional people, which.
But that's the way the consultation had to be worded, you know, against, it's, it's, it's the requirement that it had to be worded that way. And that is that the governance structures that we, we have to work with are laid down by the DFE rather than the local authorities, because academy is actually controlled directly through the DFE.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just to reassure that that's the intention.
So much to work for, one day we should have our first meeting last week, this is quite early on it. So I think we need to kind of agree with, rather than one, rather than that, honour governor, that not quite have a council representation on the board. So in terms of my feedback, you're putting a fair limit. You're going to have to play that link between ATC and the school. It's a form of feedback about our discussions and this isn't, this isn't for your authority.
So is this not one way or there isn't?
There is one, because of what we actually represent, it counts on the governing body that happens to be a council people. a council, it mustn't play that link wrong between, so in terms of feedback to A to C.
So there won't be a general item of feedback then?
I don't think there will be, no.
No, it's up to you as a town council stroke, a person responsible, whether you want to feedback, as some is on there. As you say, there's not a, there's not a representative of the town council on local governing bodies under the academy structure. So you are there as a member of the community. I think you're happy to, it's quite acceptable to have it as a.
Yeah. I'd have to get it from Derek as well, as the principal. It's just a form of feedback on which I'm not sure what to feedback to you on.
Are you all okay with that? Anyone to discuss that? I think that's the reasonable position. Okay, so going forward, there'll be no general item or expectation, unless there's something you've cleared with Derek, and he knows that you're going to be feedbacking back. So it's all to your call.
Of course, always a privilege to have in two councils a place to, on management committees for council to ask questions. Should there be a community requirement?
It goes to the information. It's open, you know, the minutes are available, freely available. It's a requirement now that minutes are put on to the websites of schools. So, you know, it's, it shouldn't be secret whilst being discussed unless it's confidential pay, pay structures and things like that. All the other things are counted.
Okay. If there's no more questions, we'll move on. Okay. Five fifteen, received report on the name of the plan.
Okay. So we are progressing pace with the, with the name of the plan. We had a meeting last week, we've got another one next week. So for the process of the moment, we have a number of working groups that put together, and they are due to draft policies of proposed questions by the end of this month, which will go together into a detailed survey that will be sent out to all addresses in Arsey during November, for response by the middle of January at the latest. The engagement with a number of the music groups will continue in parallel along with the distribution of the survey. And so any evidence that comes out of those, that engagement, we'll look back into the plan. And we envisage that the draft plan will come to council in February next year. There are a number of things that the name of the plan can't necessarily address, but are coming out of engagement with the community. And one of these I've put into proposal, I've put two down the bottom of the page. In terms of costs, I've included the summary of the costs to date, which is broken down by what, so the obvious costs are in detail there. Currently totaling fourteen hundred and forty-two thousand and fifty pence to date. And then there's, there's a few other summaries, about four hundred and ninety pounds on top of that. But we have successfully been applied for a grant, currently five thousand six hundred and fifty-seven pounds in different bands, which Leslie and Anthony, you received that as yet? Oh, we don't know.
Do we know when that would get paid?
Okay. We can apply it to a total of eight thousand pounds. And we do plan to apply for the remainder as well. The reason we haven't done the whole amount upfront is that you have to spend it within six months. So we're just trying to make sure that we didn't have any left over. So we will have some expenditure next year, so some of that can go towards, towards that. Onto a couple of proposals. So the first one is directly related to, to the name of the plan, which is around estimated costs, which is around the production and distribution of the detailed survey. So the idea is that the survey will be a, effectively four pages of A four, printed on one, on one page of A three, folded over. It will be distributed to all, all addresses in Arsey, it's not pretty decent, and it will include a reply paid envelope. The reason I just wanted to just bring this forward is that the reply paid service is basically a charge for how many, how many times, how many envelopes you actually receive. So we're going to be printing three thousand of them, which obviously adds a cost of thirty-one pence each, it's around about, it's around about a thousand pounds in total if everybody were to reply, which would be quite remarkable.
That would be good.
So, I mean, we would expect, you know, probably a maximum of twenty-five to thirty per cent. So which would be, you know, with the licence cost of ninety-four pounds, it would be a total of three hundred and twenty-six pounds fifty if we got twenty-five per cent response just for that element of it. I have been just reviewing some of the, the works and there was some confusion as to what was included. So I think the total, total cost, which I said around seven hundred and fifty, it's probably going to be more like a thousand pounds for the actual production, distribution, et cetera. But the, yeah, theoretically maximum expenditure of a thousand pounds on the bloodhead envelopes, but nothing like that, that much. So really just the proposal was that, that council approved us to go ahead on that basis. It would be, you know, expected to be a maximum of around thirteen, fourteen hundred pounds, but it could be more.
I'll second that proposal.
Any other comments? Okay. So there's a nice little cost to date chart on page two, three, two. And you see it's coming along quite nicely. Doesn't seem to be consuming, budget was set aside for a consultant at the rate. We don't anticipate using anything likely, you know, ten to twenty K.
Yeah. And one thing we also hear just on the costs is that if we are going, so basically the chart, where it says, now because of cost to date, so the proposed, we're working on the proposal, which is on the left hand of those figures there, that's what they propose. If we're going to vary from, if we think we're going to vary from that in a particular area, like for example, we might ask Alison to come to the three meetings, which is three to two already, then we'll just approve that in the name of the plan, committee meeting, and inform the town council that next time it's going to present the objection threat. Literally, you know, we're talking, talking fifty pounds a problem, no, no sense.
But it's running within.
Yeah.
Mr. Chadwick, I missed something there, because I thought council would just seconded your proposal, but we didn't agree with it.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't actually approved that proposal yet.
Oh, right. So that's the formal proposal, rather than just reading through.
Yeah.
Okay. So, and it's been seconded, so now we need to vote.
Yeah.
Proposal one.
Yep.
Okay. Those four? Those, those against? Anyone abstaining?
So proposal two. So I put this as a, it's not strictly related to the name of the plan, because I think it's a force right outside it, but I'm glad that council does own it here, because I know we've discussed this particularly often before. So as part of our engagement with businesses, one of our, one of our residents met in Weyden, the guy who met us, Mitchelsons, family, who I believe own all of the business park in, that Mill Lane, the old business park, which is a sort of the old brickworks. And one of the, one of the ideas that's come out of engagement is that could we do a land swap potentially with some of the new employment land that's planned within, within Old Cross, which would reduce the traffic going through the village? Because if the, if the businesses on that particular site include the car transporters, landmark coaches, and Mitchelsons themselves will have large plants, plant high vehicles that are constantly going through the village, then it would obviously significantly reduce certainly H G B's through the village, which is a constant, which is something that's come up continually in the engagement with the community. So Mitchelsons are pretty much in favour of such a, such a solution. They would welcome not having to do the twenty, twenty minutes each way through, through the high street. And it's really, I guess, the proposal is to work out how we can take this forward and, you know, whether we can put a working party together to look at that, maybe as council telecameras here, but if he's got some, some ideas on here, we'll work that.
So we're already engaging with a number of other businesses in the local area about relocating to that particular site. Obviously, the access straight on to the five oh seven and closer to the motorway network, et cetera, interests a lot of companies. And obviously, as we've discussed, moving people out, let's say, the big wall side and then Mill Lane, and relocating those businesses to, to the edge, the northern edge is a sensible proposition. The phrase is used there, a land swap. It's, a land swap's a fine, but you need to be doing something with the old land as well to add the value to it. So it's whether that land can be brought into use for other things, which would give some value to it in terms of a land swap. But certainly we've got officers are looking at talking to other businesses already in terms of relocating onto that site. So it certainly adds this into the mix. I think it's a great idea.
So can I have a question?
I just have a question on that concept. If that went ahead, what would prevent, I mean, the other businesses in haulage and trucks?
I think that's what the council are saying. Yeah, it needs to be predicated, you could do the land swap.
But you will be able to.
Yeah. You're trying to say, actually, the added value is if you turn it into light industrial. Because the big for me is you want to keep jobs. So you change it from heavy haulage, et cetera, to light industrial units, and you put jobs down that, and or you convert it to housing. Housing might be a bit harder because it's quite, in terms of a dirty site, so it needs considerable infrastructure to improve that. But it's, you need to add some value as to why you want to do a land swap. So it's generally predicated on, I build here, you build there, and that's one. So some of the other, the other companies are looking to relocate purely because they see the added value moving into new offices and new premises, closer to the road infrastructure. But it's certainly something we need to, we need to pursue, and that's the time to do it before that, that site opens up. Because I mean, looking at what we've done in other areas, and if you go to sites in Biggleswade, they've sold very, very quickly. So anything that's on the A one corridor, it's close to it, it's selling quite, quite fast, the people are moving in. I would expect those sites at north of Arsey to move quite very, very fast, once they've gone away. So we need to move early. Happy to help with that.
Okay. Any more questions over proposal two? All right. So I just want to, I have a question over the, the plan expenditure.
Yes.
And through the sums, excuse me, if proposal one is paying eleven hundred pounds, are you saying that, that money is going to come from the remaining budget that's already been allocated? Or do we need to prove that it comes from this?
Well, if we get the, basically, we should get the grant through, which would cover, which would basically pay back the initial, the initial two thousand pounds was put in place to cover the period when the initial grant. So the grant is to cover the expenses of the consultants that we were expecting to. So basically, that figure would come off and that two thousand pounds should then be.
Okay. Good job. Okay. Thank you for your report.
So just one, on the proposal, the proposal is to put together a working party to, to really take this forward, to make sure, I mean, I'm not sure it naturally fits in any of the committees. I mean, it could fit in public, public lands and highway, but it's in public lands or highway. Yeah. So I just think it's, it doesn't naturally, I mean, you know, the general person finance is the only other one that is prospective, but given that, I think it potentially, it's sort of like a, can work alongside the name of the plan, so obviously it would work for the university involved in the name of the plan to work with.
I just hope that rather than having a working party, we just have a whole person that's liaising with C B C. Just to make, to keep the case up today.
I'm quite happy to, to take that on, take that. We'll all look at it back.
How, how much work do you anticipate this being?
I don't think there's going to be a huge amount. I think it's just making sure that.
There's lead officers at Central Beds who are working on the, the development plan from the north of Arsey, and they're already engaging with other companies, et cetera. So I think we will engage with those officers, because then that's the rhythm.
So not actually work to be done as a liaison?
It's a liaison, yeah. And just giving them direction. They probably don't know that Mitchelsons were, would be interested in relocating to that site, and then we've got to look at the bigger picture and tell them how we make this work.
And it's really happy to dig through the master plan.
Are you on the G P N plan?
I'm not. I'm on the planning, public lands and highways. I mean, I can, I'll just feedback to council, I don't think it really.
It's not working party, is it?
It's just an usual.
Okay. We're all okay with that. Anyone object to that?
So are we revising the proposal then, to be the John, John works with?
I guess we've got to regard it to rather than being a working party that it's.
Right. So it's an amendment, I'll propose an amendment to your proposal, the working party one, namely you, worked on that. So if anyone likes to second that amendment, please. Thank you.
Can I just ask one question before, just to, I guess, communication. It says a working party, you know, it's, it's going to be to engage with C B C. Does that person have an influence, should we say?
Well, I think at this stage, it's about raising their awareness that there's an opportunity there for us to do something a bit bigger than, than just saying, putting up some factory units and saying, do you want to come and fill them? So I think it really is saying, actually, officers, there may be a deal to be done here, okay, and can we explore it? Okay. Big thing for me is actually making sure that part of, part of all this has got to be developing more jobs within Arsey, so we don't become a dormitory like Fairfield Park. So it may be that rather than the current heavy lorries and industry that's down there, so if we maybe look to say, can we convert it to something lighter? And go down that route, rather than more houses or something, which would add value to Mitchelsons' deal.
Okay. So there's an amendment.
I'm a bit wary about the initial statement and the proposal, because C B C should support this initiative in principle. I understand that the pursuit in text is that the initiative in principle is to relocate everybody away from that site. That would be great, but it seems there's more to it, possible land swap, potential that might end up happening.
I think that's what we're saying, if we support the principle.
I'd support the principle beyond working in the board of councils to find out what about it. Has to get it, as I can, wouldn't go any further than that personally. Yeah. I mean, that's, yeah, I mean, it's nothing, there's, there's no, I, I think the initiative is, is to, the initiative is the land swap, and we support the idea of the land swap in principle, but we're not going to, you know, if it doesn't work, yeah, we're always going to come back to cancel before anything, anything, you know, actually happens with it.
Okay. Before I call about any more questions or discussions with the votes. Okay. All right. We're voting on the second amendment, those four. What is it? Second amendment, but we have a working party called John Moore to work on this. All right. I think that's unanimous, isn't it? Cool. All right. Moving on. Excuse me. Thank you for your report, councillor. And one from sixteen, a project for playground inspection. So who, who are in this?
Someone who might come and.
Ah, that's right.
So just to be clear, what, what is the resolution going to be, what would be agreed? We voted on the second amendment, but.
The amendment was the proposal two, that we should support the principle of doing something with that land, by means of in the council liaising with Central Beds to see where, what opportunities there are.
Why did we make the second amendment that we now?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, is that, so we now have to vote on the initial? No, I think, I think as we've approved the amendment. There must be amendments. No, just the amendments. I think that's okay. Are you okay?
Um, I just, well, yeah.
Chad, I, I can certainly see where Andy's going for. What we don't want is in serious time. Somebody picks up a minute and said, well, actually this council on this particular night agreed
In principle.
In principle to us slap, you know, loads more of the stuff on there that wasn't discussed. And this was, you know, so I think it needs to be the outline, the outline idea of pursuing development of that or land swap is, 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 is So it is basically, we don't agree because we're actually, we're going to do it. It's, let's look at the options that are available.
So procedurally, are we, are we able to change the wording of the proposal?
With amendment.
The amendment we passed.
We had two amendments. The working party would be just council one.
One person, yeah.
And the, the skirt which we are produced, there wouldn't be a blanket supporting this one.
So let's get the minute right and agree to study options available to work with CVC to, to pursue a movement of Michelsons to a new location and to develop that site. Or to look at what options are available for that site.
See what the options are.
Yeah, see what options are available. Look at CVC and see what options are available for Mill Lane. Mill Lane, yeah. Okay. That'd be many more we can out for, isn't it? Okay. Okay, we're moving on. That's cool. All right. Playground inspection report. Are there any red alerts in here that we need to know about? Before winter, winter getting mighty important. It looks like a lot of this is in hand.
I've just got a question. We've had an independent company coming, CPN Playground Limited, to do this work. The bold bit I presume is what the inspection reports told us. For example, ownership signs, they're saying none. Then someone, Andrew's gone around or someone determined the council's gone around and said, actually, there are some ownership signs. Also a bit further down, it says state skate park. It's flagged up in this report. One of the frames is bent and then we've assessed that as more a hazard. I'm just conscious we've, we've got an independent expert, a playground company, who inspected our, our equipment and we're a bit of really some of the findings. Either A, the company who's done the inspection, hasn't done it properly. And we should go back and then pursue them. So actually, we haven't seen where the ownership signs are. You know, what else have we missed? I presume we'll pay this contractor. And second, where are we assessing, they said something's bent, have we agreed it's bent? But is there any liability for us if we don't, don't fix that? And there's another one saying, you know, there's a bolt missing, but we're saying the clamp is tight and not loose. So just a bit concerned about some of those issues. Ready to just tie, tie those up.
I've done the summary on John because councillors, we went through the summary rather than the regional way through it. We have got ownership signs. They have only just gone up on the Bay area. Oh, well, I have to make sure he's looking at those.
Is the pointer just going up? Could he have done this?
Well, I'm just looking. He did it on the twelve o'clock clock that's a week ago, isn't it? No, come on, eight days ago. I'll have to check when we can make sure we have seen them.
I don't need an answer right now. So do we, do we need a little process where we, we have to flag to the consultant, we think this has been correct?
Just, you know, he's seen some signs and he was inspecting our paper. What else is missing? And why are we using this company? Second, if we disagree with, he's saying something's wrong and we're saying actually it's okay, it's where do you stand if there's an accident?